All right, good evening. I'd like to call the November 14, 2024 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call our councilmember Les Robinson for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I hope you will join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and for the life we live. Thank you for your amazing power and the work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and the many blessings we have received, both acknowledged and unknown. We thank you for our family, our relatives, our friends, our colleagues, and our citizens. We thank you for the many employees and staff who serve us and the citizens of Greenville. We thank you for your great love and care and your infinite mercy and grace. Tonight, I ask that you give each of us the experience, wisdom, and discernment to properly consider all views and opinions on the issues that come before us. I ask that you give each of us patience and perseverance and guide us as we consider and decide what is the best decision for the citizens of Greenville on the issues that come before us. Tonight, Lord, I ask that you give your special peace and comfort to the family of Matt Scully, who has recently lost his mother. We know she's smiling big in heaven, and we know she's smiling big at the legacy of her family, of those who are still here with us. Lord, I ask that you pour out your abundant blessings on those who are less fortunate and in need. And finally, Father, I thank you for another day. Use me as you will. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Proton Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
And Councilmember Willis has let us know she will not be attending this evening. Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager?
I have no recommended changes, Mayor.
Anybody from council have any recommended changes? Does anyone have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Mayor Proton Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Go for it.
Wait on the microphone.
Got it.
Hey.
Valerie.
All right, tonight, we've got a special recognition. I think this has been delayed, what, a couple of months now? I think we're coming in September. All right. We're proud to recognize tonight the Tar Heel 11-year-old All-Star team on their 2024 Tournament of State Champions win this past summer, which is the highest level of competition for this age bracket. Their record for the season included wins against teams from all over the east, including Virginia, Florida, and South Carolina. Overall, the team won districts in Greenville, the North Carolina State Championship, and the Tournament of State Champions, finishing with an impressive record of 11-1. Also worth highlighting during this run of 12 games, the team outscored their opponents by a margin of 82 to 23. That's pretty impressive, guys. With the most runs given up in a single game of five. There were three shutouts. Who had the shutouts? Okay, all right. One no-hitter. Who had the no-hitter?
Oh, my gosh.
All right. And three run-rule games. Good job, guys. Congratulations on an outstanding season. We're going to call you up individually. We've got certificates for each of you, but we're really proud of you. You know, everybody knows that baseball is very strong in the city of Greenville. I'm fortunate, I got to be in baseball at ECU, but I'm also coaching over in softball right now, so I get the other side for the girls. But we know how rich the tradition is in Greenville for baseball, and we're excited and we're thankful that you guys did so well and were able to go around the southeast to be able to show what Greenville can do with baseball. So congratulations, guys, and we'll call you up right now. First is Tripp Dixon. Akeem Brown. I would say, do we check birth certificates? Todd Hallow. Hi, the team favorite, Reed Haddock. Eric Lovett. All right. All right, guys, so I saw most of you out there in the hallway, okay? Now, what did I say?
We said, who wants to speak?
Yeah, who's going to speak on behalf of the team? I left.
Reed, you going to speak?
Yeah.
All right, Reed, you ready?
Whatever you say, whatever you want to say.
Open mind. Keep the mind, people are watching at home right now.
Knock it out of the park.
Whenever I'm ready. I gotta say, this team put up a great performance, even in the district states and TOSE, and even when I gave them motivational speeches to pump them up, it really boosted them up and helped them win games. And I would like to thank my dad for helping me teach me to be a great coach, and let's
Gosh, such a mush.
That was awesome.
Thank you, Josh.
Good. Appreciate it, guys. Congratulations.
I was about to cry.
Reed, hey, that was awesome.
That was great.
Mayor, good call.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming down.
He's like he had to. He practiced that. That was awesome.
Such a mush.
It was awesome.
Yeah, man, that was good.
Sorry for everybody else's watches, all downhill from here. All right, now, we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week, shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotment 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotment 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. We have one registered speaker, Ms. Karen Jenkins. You have three minutes to address the mayor and council. Do you just want to go right there to the public podium?
Hey, y'all.
Hey.
It's a hard performance to follow, but it happens to be a theme that I am asking about, too. So my name's Karen Jenkins. I am a mental health clinician here in the community, but I have been here for 22 years now. Before then, I lived in western North Carolina. And on September 27 of this year, I heard a word I'd never thought I'd hear in real life, and that was landslide. My family is safe, but they almost weren't. And I have been committed, along with a group of women here, to providing aid to western North Carolina. And I would love to reach out to you guys and see what sorts of communication, awareness, or support that we can offer as a community. I think that the theme of community resilience that I see with these kiddos right here, this baseball team, the energy and love that they bring, I felt something like that in western North Carolina, and I wish I could give it to each of you. It is beautiful and amazing, and in a time of such division in the world, I have seen so much good and so much resilience. And I want Greenville, Pitt County, eastern North Carolina, everybody to be a part of it. So I'm not sure exactly what I'm asking, but I would love to hear if there are things that can happen. And our group, we just got our incorporation for a nonprofit. We have contacts and things in the local area. We can help get aid to the people that need it, but even if we can't, Carolina Hearts is also dedicated to building community resilience here after the disaster. My hope is that it is something that helps with disruptive events. We're working on mental health kits for kids. Three of us are clinicians, so we are doing some evidence-based things to provide that. We've been asked for everything from a Gatorade to a bulldozer. So you can imagine that there are many needs in between, so whatever we can do, I would love any sort of support, ideas, connections, resources. I know there are so many needs in the community right now, and this is just one of them, but I just want you to think of Barbara and Suwannee Noah, who told me about the rain stinging her arms so bad while she scooped water out of her basement to shut the door on the flood. There is so much good in all of us, and I'd like to help and match the world.
What was the name of your organization?
Carolina Hearts.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And can you tell those who may be watching this how to get in contact with your organization?
Oh, yeah, that would probably be very smart, thank you. So we have a Facebook group, we have a website, www.carolinaharts.org. We have an email address. We're pre-501(c)(3), so we have our stuff in with the IRS, but we can go ahead and do receipts for that, for tax deductions. And then I'm just around, like, I've been in Greenville for a long time, so a lot of people know me, so I have a personal, you know, Facebook page and things like that. I have a private practice, so any of those methods of contact.
Is there a phone number you would care to share that people who want to help can call?
Sure. And I have some flyers of things that we're doing right now. I'm trying to get a fire truck to a department. We've already gotten three donated from a place in South Carolina, so they are getting to places in western North Carolina, and we are liaising that over. We do need a fire truck, so if anybody knows of one of those, yeah, that would be awesome, but I'm going to get in touch with some volunteer fire department folks.
Ms. Jenkins, do you have any of that material with you here tonight?
I did not.
Okay, all right. I'll tell you what, I'm going to ask our fire rescue chief, Brock Davenport, to get with you outside and get some more information.
Absolutely.
So we can share.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. We appreciate it. All right, anyone else that would like, any other registered, anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
There might be somebody out there. They could be busting through the door right now.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to board appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First board that we have is the Pitt-Greenville Airport Authority, Mayor Connolly.
I would be internally grateful if I could get one of my councilmembers to nominate Michael Overton to the Pitt-Greenville Airport Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All right, council, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Overton.
All right.
Next, we have the Police Community Relations Committee, and just a reminder, these are direct appointments, you don't need a motion. Mayor Proton Daniels.
Asia. Can you come back to me?
Yes, I can come back to you. Okay. Next is Councilmember Foreman.
I'll postpone mine.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, I'm trying to get in touch with the person who is eligible for reappointment to see if she would like to be reappointed, so I will also need to continue.
Thank you.
How many people are on the Police Community Relations Board?
Seven. So it's one per.
Because I know they're struggling. I know, I spoke to one of them, and said they were struggling to get a quorum. But you have somebody, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. You're all right? Are you looking for it right now?
I am.
Okay. Give me to play some music real quick.
Who wanted to get out of here by 7:30?
Anybody else excited about the Pirates playing tonight?
Pirates.
Hi, 7:30 tonight. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm sitting here doing my part, people.
Do you know what their name starts with?
I have it right here. Asia Katoon.
Yeah, Asia Katoon. Asia Katoon.
Asia Katoon. Okay. All right, and that's a direct appointment, Asia Katoon.
Congratulations, Asia Katoon.
Thank you for your patience.
And finally, we have the Youth Council, but that is Councilmember Willis's, and we will continue that to next month.
Sounds good. All right.
Multimodal Transportation Commission.
I don't have that. We had talked about it. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do have two to be replaced, Daniel Hemm and Kayleen Levine, yes.
Great. I'd like to recommend for appointment, Dr. James Byrd and Ms. Kelly Gonzalez. For the Multimodal Transportation Commission.
All right, motion's been made. Councilmember Scully, second by Mayor Proton Daniels. All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations. You said Mr.?
Doctor.
Dr. Byrd and Ms. Gonzalez.
Ms. Gonzalez, okay. Thank you.
And for real, that is the conclusion of the appointments.
Are you sure? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
I'll thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, item number three, assignment of the lease agreement for Gossmann Stadium to host a Coastal Plains League team from Capital Broadcasting to CHA Baseball Management, LLC. Item number four, authorization to receive funds from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the 2024 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. Item number five, resolution declaring police canine Audi as surplus and authorizing his disposition to Officer Chad Bowen. Item number six, resolution declaring Iron Horse Chairs as surplus and authorizing their disposition to Pine Top's Police Department. Item number seven, resolution declaring Ford Sedans as surplus and authorizing their disposition to Teen Driving Solutions School. And item number eight, various tax refunds greater than $100.
I got just one item for a quick question.
Yep.
I'd like to pull item number four.
Okay.
Just for a quick question.
I'll move through the remaining items.
Second.
Item four.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, move on to item number four.
Yes, item number four, authorization to receive funds for the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the 2024 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. I'll call forward Solid Waste Manager, Delbert Bryant, to answer any questions you have.
Delbert, thank you so much for answering these questions. I know we've got a very large grant pending for some projects north of the river. Is this in addition to that grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Is this a grant we've received or a grant we hope to receive?
We have received this grant. We're just asking for the funds to be placed in an account so we can go ahead and make the purchases.
Okay, all right, fantastic. Well, go us. Congratulations. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we will now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, for a total, for each side, no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I would remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, ordinance to Annex Arbor Hills South, Section 2, Phase 12 and 13, property involving 10.3764 acres, located along the northern right-of-way of LT Hardy Road and at the current terminus of Sparrow Court. I'll call forward City Planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the northern right-of-way of LT Hardy Road and at the current terminus of Sparrow Court. This property is current, excuse me, this property is located in the Hardy Creek watershed, and if stormwater rules apply, will require 10-year detention. The property is also located in the primary service area on the tiered growth map, and will be located in City Council Voting District Number Four. This property is anticipated to yield 30 single-family lots with an estimated tax value of $9 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Can you go back to the larger map again? All righty, thank you. That was it.
All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number four. I'm sorry, number 10, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10, ordinance to Annex Ridgewood Farms, Phase 2, property involving a total of 17.91 acres, located at the north of Thomas Langston Road and at the current terminus of Stonebrier Drive and Sedge Drive. Again, call forward City Planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. This annexation includes two separate tracks. Both tracks are located north of Thomas Langston Road. Track one is more specifically located at the current terminus of Stonebrier Drive, and track two is located at the current terminus of Sedge Drive. The property drains through the Swift Creek watershed, and if stormwater rules apply, will require 25-year detention. The property is also located in the primary service area on the tiered growth map, and will be located in City Council Voting District Number Two. Track one on the left is anticipated to yield 42 single-family lots, and track two is anticipated to yield 69 multifamily units. Estimated tax value of $23,650,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye. Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Move on to item number 12. 11. Gosh, I'm all over the place tonight. 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11, ordinance requested by Rennsport Motorworks, LLC, to rezone 1.52 acres located along the western right-of-way of Port Terminal Road and 400 plus or minus feet north of East 10th Street from RA 20, residential agriculture, to CH heavy commercial. Again, call forward City Planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
This property is located in the eastern part of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the western right-of-way of Port Terminal Road and 400 feet north of East 10th Street. For added reference, I've added the location of the lows on the map, which is south of the subject property. This is an image of the property taken on Port Terminal Road. To your left will be East 10th Street. This is a survey of the property totaling 1.52 acres. The property drains through the Hardy Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it would require 10-year detention, nitrogen phosphorus reduction. The property is not located in the special flood hazard area. No jurisdictional wetland streams and riparian buffers exist on the property. The requested zoning could generate a net increase of 10 trips per day. This property is currently zoned RA 20, or residential agricultural. Under the current zoning, the site could accommodate two single-family lots. Under the proposed zoning of CH or heavy commercial, the site could accommodate 13,000 square feet of major repair. And just to note, the map's a little hard to see, but to the north adjacent of the subject property is currently zoned heavy commercial, and that was rezoned back in 2018. heavy commercial, and that was rezoned back in 2018. Future land use and character map recommends commercial at the northwestern corner of the intersection of East 10th Street and Port Terminal Road, extending to the north and transitions to traditional low to medium density to the west. Further, potential conservation of open space is recommended to the north, and the potential conservation of open space is recommended to indicate potential environmental constraints. In staff's opinion, the requested zoning is in compliance with the future land use and character map. Therefore, staff recommends approval. And on October 15, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Now, if you have any answer, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, I have a couple. Thank you for that information. My first question is, did, I don't know if I missed it, but how many trips a day would this rezoning generate?
Based on the requested zoning, 10 additional trips per day.
10 additional trips. How many total trips? Guess for a CH zoning, seems like that would, there would be more than that.
29 trips per day.
A total of 29?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's under all uses of the, all the, all the CH?
No, ma'am.
And what are they proposing?
Staff is estimating that the site could accommodate major repair. So boat repair, vehicle repair.
So some kind of repair business. But under the CH zoning, if we approve the CH zoning, I mean, any, any kind of heavy commercial could go there?
Yes, ma'am. When preparing the report, staff looked at the requested zoning of CH. Given the location of the property, I'll go to it, I'll do it from here. The location isn't very visible from East 10th Street, and much like commercial businesses, they like to get those drivers on East 10th Street looking at their business. So really, in staff's opinion, and when we were looking at the report, commercial services such as retail services, it just wouldn't work that well at this property. So we are estimating, or it could accommodate major repair.
And so my second question is, when you look at the future land use plan map, typically, when you look at that map and you, you say, you know, what the zoning could be based on that map, you say unless conditions change. Or when conditions change, it also changes, you know, what, what has been foreseen for that area. Do I have that right?
I'm not quite following.
Okay, it's more of a, sort of a philosophy question, that the future land use plan map, as I understand it, is created for a certain set of, of conditions. And then when those conditions change, zoning that is prescribed under the land use plan may or may not be appropriate. Because that's why we go back and often change the land use plan in the future, at least as I understand it. So really, kind of a philosophy question there.
If I'm understanding correctly, yes, ma'am. I mean, when the future land use plan was created, I think it was back in 2016, it was last updated, residential, single-family residential isn't the vision of the area. So that's why the future land use and character map recommends commercial.
And if conditions change, so that commercial may not be the best use of that land, you could, it could potentially change again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Did you mention that area was not in the flood plain?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Did that area flood in 99? Because there was the Cliff Seafood Restaurant right across the street from there, right?
I, I believe multiple of the properties on Port Terminal Road were impacted by that hurricane, but I'm not quite sure.
Just curious about sustainability of a commercial lot there. I'm worried about environmental concerns of a commercial property being built there and potentially being destroyed by a future flood and the environmental impacts that might have. It'd be a concern that I have.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Mike Baldwin. I represent Rennsport Motorsports Motorworks, which is another one of Woody Witcher's LLC. Y'all are familiar with Woody, a lifetime Pitt County native. He's done a lot of investment, done a lot of development in Greenville. He, he owns the tracks, already zoned CH to the north of this site. He owns the property that is zoned high-density multifamily across the street of this site to the east. As Chris said, his application is in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan and the Horizon's Plan 2026. We, we do foresee very low traffic just due to the proximity or the non-proximity of East 10th Street. It's kind of off the beaten path, but it's, it's not in an area that's, well, with the existing zoning and then the, you had the masonry business that was down there first. It's not an area that I would consider very conducive to a continued residential use. You have the traffic to the boat ramp, and you have the traffic to the, the refuge site. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much the traffic along there. I'm not sure about the, if the flood waters got that high back in Floyd, but, but I will say, we, it is very high compared to, you know, some of the other lands. There is a small ravine that, or low area that runs through the property. But it's much more conducive to have a commercial use rather than, than somebody's home, in my opinion. Well, it's not in a flood-prone area anyway, but if we had some just catastrophic event, you know, as we had, that, that nobody can predict a lot like we did in 99, I think the request is, is better suited for that. If you'll look, Chris, would you mind turning back to your zoning map? Thank you. Thanks, bud. If you look to the west of this site, it's zoned R6A, which is medium-density residential. And really, what you have there is high-density residential, but fit up toward the road in the higher areas, which you, you do a lot when you have properties that are environmentally challenged. This is was the, you know, the topography and the drop-off to Hardy Creek. Then you have the other, uh, heavy commercial property to the north. And then I spoke with the owner of the property to the south of this that owns these two lots. As a matter of fact, at that time, he wanted to proceed with rezoning his as well, but there was some taxation, the tax rate would go up, so he decided not to do that. But he, he doesn't have any, any problems with this rezoning as well. And then we have the, the high-density multifamily, like I mentioned, across the road. So we do, we have set up that transitional buffer. Multifamily, commercial along the road, and then multifamily across the road. Will note that planning and zoning did approve this unanimously, and I will be glad to answer your questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, I'd like to open up this discussion with a conversation about what I was alluding to earlier, which is, which are the conditions on the ground. We spent a lot of time talking about 10th Street East, and we've looked at it. And presently, because of the really unbridled development that has taken place in East Greenville, which is good in many ways, we've got housing, we've got businesses which we like. Unfortunately, 10th Street East as a corridor has not kept up with the growth. 10th Street East as a corridor at present is extremely dangerous. And there are no safety improvements, or not the kind that are needed. There are very few sidewalks. There are no zebra stripe crosswalks. And we just recently made an effort to try to get the speed limit reduced. What's more, this particular location, Port Terminal Road has one way in and one way out. It was largely underwater during Hurricane Floyd, and it is a very environmentally sensitive area. That notwithstanding, it's a blind curve and it's a hill. So I have a lot of concerns about any rezoning to commercial in this area. Specifically, there is new multifamily development taking place, which is going to add to the traffic concerns. There's no signal here, and so there's just multiple problems here. In addition, I'm concerned about the noise from heavy commercial. That's what it's going to mean for the residents over to the west. And so in general, I just do, do not see much positive here that would make me inclined to support it. So given that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Seeing none?
I'm on the fence about it. I, I was wondering why we were doing heavy commercial rather than general commercial, since it's so far off the road, but...
Yeah, I'm hesitant also because of the type of zoning it is. And we can get information about the type of business that could possibly go there, but I think we're opening it up for any potential business to go there. And with the safety and traffic concerns, they're, they're real there. That, that curve is dangerous getting in and out of lows there. It's dangerous. If it was a garage, like we're talking about, I think that would be, you know, if there was a small garage back there with one mechanic and a couple boats going in and out, I can see that. But I, I think we put our community at risk just by essentially writing a blank check when you rezone something. I'm convincing myself of that, but then...
My thing is, this, this lot is a very small lot, if I understood correctly. And that to the north of it, it's already been zoned this manner. And, and, you know, I trust our staff and their analysis of it because they're the experts. They're the ones who put the work in, they're the ones who have the experience of not just this piece of property, but all pieces of property, and they're able to vet what they believe are their valid opinions versus what we speculate up here. And I believe they said net result would be 29 trips a day, which is, you know, that's a very small number of trips in a 24-hour period. I just don't, I mean, with the size of the lot, and it's already been zoned to the north of it, to me, it makes consistent, and I think, I think this is why the city approved it. Like, it's consistent with what we've looked at already. It's consistent with what that plan was from 2026 Horizons, where we had a, a large group of community stakeholders that voiced their opinion about how the new screen will develop. And I certainly respect Councilmember Blackburn's concerns, because I agree, it's, it's not an absolute that we are bound by, but a lot of thought, process, money, energy, resources, and finances were put into developing that plan, and this is exactly what it envisions. Below us, the plan is unapproved and analyzed, and it looks like the city supports it's a small track. It's a negligible number of trips. I don't think it's really going to add anything to it. As I recall the flood, there's a series of ponds that are down the left-hand side. As I remember, that's kind of where the flooding stopped. It looked like the flood plains we've got predicted, the one, was it 1,300 and 500? Or what was it? Seemed to be not even close to it. So I think it's consistent with what's already to the north of it, closer to the, to the flood area than that. So I think it just makes sense to approve an area. And again, as they pointed out, I believe staff also opponent for it. Might, you know, it's just the location, it's not going to generate a whole lot of traffic. It's because it's not, first, it's not big, number two, it's not on the 10th Street corridor. And I certainly agree with Councilmember Blackburn, we need to be a better advocate trying to improve the safety, not just of here, but further down towards Greenville Boulevard. And that's a DOT issue, and we learned that DOT was very, very snail-like in their movements. And, you know, hopefully we can try and do that. But I think this is a, it's consistent with what's north of it. It's a small track. I don't, I don't really think it's going to add, I wouldn't think it'd add a lot of traffic to it. Staff seems to think that. It's consistent. Staff supports it. So for that reason, I make a motion to approve item number 11.
What do you want to say, Mark?
And, and Mayor, if I, I could make a statement, and, you know, my, as city manager, my, my focus is to make sure that the, the City Council has all the information that they need in order to make a decision. And I think that information has been provided, but I'm going to say the same thing, and I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds, but I'm going to say the same thing that I said when, when it came to the, the request to rezone the property across from Oxford Road from one level of, of residential zoning to a higher density. It's a, it's a shame that we're having to have these conversations about 10th Street, because the true question, the, the true issue is, is that if we're having to make a decision on a rezoning of a one-and-a-half-acre piece of property, it's only going to increase on, potentially, because I know it could be, anything could go there under heavy commercial, but basically on its location, you know, a, a machine works, type of boat works, type of business would go there. If we're having to make the decision on rezoning based off of a net increase of 10 cars, then we're never going to have any development on 10th Street. And the reality of it is, is that we need to be focused on getting improvements to 10th Street. That is the, the real project that needs to happen. And it's a shame that Council's having to have these conversations about 10th Street when we know there's an issue with, with, with traffic there, and we know that improvements need to be made. And that's why we need to be working with our NC DOT to actually move forward a project. And I'll just leave it there.
And I guess, for me, that's where my concern lies, is that I feel that oftentimes, because we have not put the infrastructure in place to prepare for growth at any level, we tend to be putting the cart before the horse. And I know, you know, DOT is, I wouldn't even say moving like a snail, they're just not moving. And, and so we're continuing to put our citizens at risk, and I know it's a few cars per day, but when you say general, heavy commercial rather than general commercial, that was where my hair stood up, because I'm thinking for the future, what could potentially go there that would increase it even more and put our citizens at risk? You know, just, was it last week? It's further, you know, downtown near campus, we had two people get hit. And between Greenville Boulevard and Porter Town Road on 10th Street, when I'm navigating that, I'm always exceptionally cautious. And so I, you know, I'm just torn with, you know, the way our, we're growing, but are we growing responsibly and considering all aspects to respect what everyone has said of what is happening and how it might affect our citizens and their safety?
It's, to the point about traffic, it's been said that there would be a net increase of 10 trips. Well, the, there's one house there now, and I doubt that house is doing 25 trips, if I may. So we're talking about a lot, we're, we're talking about probably a net increase of, I think the total possible is going to be like 30, 39, is that right?
29, I think is what you said.
29, yeah. Total possible.
It was 29.
Total, okay. That's just far more than there is now. But I think what we've got to look at is that when we approve a CH there, every single thing that's allowed under CH can go there. And you put a special use permit on that property, and it can be a gas station. And that's going to be a whole lot more traffic, and you combine it with those other CH lots. We're looking at, right now, something that could develop into something extremely dangerous if we continue to rezone CH without some safety precautions on 10th Street. There's no signal at that light. I know I said that earlier. That's a hill, and it's a blind curve. Again, this may be a very innocuous and even positive business for that location. I'm, I'm not convinced one way or the other on it, but we can't look at what is the specific business being proposed. We have to look at what is happening in that area and what does it mean? And I cannot support more heavy commercial in that area until we've got a better situation on 10th Street.
Do you?
Sorry.
I was going to say, one question for staff. What are, what's on the three lots that are already heavy commercial, zone heavy commercial right now?
Those three lots to the north are vacant.
So there could be a, if they decided they put a gas station there, they could be there right next to a residential development, I mean, a residential house, I should say.
Yes, sir. Yeah? Under CH?
Yeah, honestly, I would have to check that. I'm not 100% confident on that answer of yes.
Yeah, and I mean, I will just say, I agree with you. I think the NC DOT is horrible. You can put that in the paper if you'd like to, I don't care. They have been absolutely slow, non-receptive to any type of safety on any of their roads in our community. I would say that right now, and not very helpful at all. But I also say that the future land use plan has this for what he's coming to propose today too. And you've got a single-family house that's right next to it. Does Mr. Witcher own those lots too?
The ones that have already been zoned heavy commercial?
So, I mean, it's already there. I mean, I will tell you, I will do everything in my power to get the NC DOT to do something. And I'm hoping that they will do something. And I'm going to make some phone calls to make sure that they do something. But I don't think it would be fair to the applicant that's coming and asking for what the city and the community has put together in the future land use plan over there. And personally, I mean, I don't, I don't think we as a city should be asking people to move in that area with the flooding that's taking place further down the road. And I know there's a tremendous amount of traffic that goes down there, you know, that bring boats, kayaks, and different things like that down Port Terminal Road. So, you know, I get it, I'm with you. I'm 100% with you as far as the traffic's concerned. And I do think that we need to do whatever we can to our state legislators and the NC DOT staff to push more requirements. But I don't think it would be fair for the applicant to get denied when you've got it in the adjacent parcels right next to it. Because if they wanted to put up a gas station, they could put one up right now right next to the existing single-family house that's on these lots right now.
I appreciate the argument that it's far down that road and nobody's going to put a gas station down. So I get that. And I also know Mr. Yijin, I wish I'd had an opportunity to speak with him, but he owns the two properties, I guess, to the south. I know and trust him. I wish I'd had that opportunity to speak with him about it. But I do know and trust him. And if he's in favor of it, that also makes me pause. And I'm sorry I didn't have an opportunity to speak with him about it. So that's a tough one, really is.
It is a tough one. I mean, I hear Councilwoman Blackburn not so much as being opposed as just wanting a pause on the Tenth Street. I'm pretty sure when we put all these plans in place, the rapid growth was probably not expected. But I still get, we put those things in place and we have them there. It would be nice if people were here that lived in that area to kind of help us decide. Because it is about the people that reside, that will go that way. I know personally, I just, who, Tenth Street is something else.
I had one call me today that was concerned about the amount of traffic. But, you know, again, we're talking about 29 trips per day total. So that made me feel a little bit better about that. Where my reservation is, is it being heavy commercial rather than, and that's even with the, so, you know, the properties adjacent to it are already heavy commercial. But that expands how much heavy commercial is on that road and what the possibilities might be. And so for me, I'm not even just thinking about in the moment. I am concerned about in the future. And can I ask, so the homes are the, right here, is this, Marion, is that where the homes are?
Mm-hmm. There's a couple of homes and then there's one home on this lot, these two lots.
That are, that are.
But I, yeah. But, you know, for that type of business, you know, I don't see where there would be any harm. It's just, you know, thinking about what might happen in the future and how it might impact our citizens in the future. You know, I don't think that sometimes we don't look far down the road and think about how things are going to impact those people that we serve long-term. In the short term, I think it's probably okay. And so, yes, I'm torn also.
For a procedural standpoint, we got one motion on, actually, we got two motions out right now.
Two motions, right.
Right, so council can only dispose of one motion at a time. So I would recommend the council deal with.
Entertain Councilmember Blackburns. All right, there's been a motion made by Councilmember Blackburn. Is there a second? See none? Motion dies and lack a second? Is there another motion that would like to be made?
I made a motion to approve item number 11.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Robinson. Is there a second? Come on, folks. We've got to have one either way. Yes or no?
I'll second the motion to approve.
All right. Got a second. Making progress.
Just by way of discussion and to Councilwoman Foreman's point, I mean, we've got, we've got general commercial all on that corner. We've got commercial all across the street. We're adding CH, not neighborhood commercial, not general commercial, but CH. I think it is essential for us to think about what this is going to be. And given what we know, again, we have no jurisdiction over the DOT, but we know what we're dealing with. No light, blind curve, one way in, one way out. It's a hill. Tenth Street East is already extremely dangerous. I live there, I see it every single day. It is unnavigatable. I actually, tonight, there was, you know, traffic, stopped traffic both ways on Tenth Street East. But it's going real, you know, when it does start, it tends to go very fast. It's just, it's an unsustainable situation. So while this, while I appreciate the idea, and everyone I think knows that I'm very faithful generally to the land use plan, when the conditions change, the land use plan also needs to be reexamined. And I think we've got changed conditions here, which say Tenth Street East cannot support what we see happening on this map. So.
Can I ask why we did, why they are zoned ZG and ZH instead of CG?
Can you say that once again? I'm sorry.
Why CH instead of, why heavy commercial instead of general?
That is a request by the applicant.
So that's what the applicant requested, okay.
All right, any other discussion? We got a motion, it's been properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. Wait.
Hey, if you don't, hey, if you don't say anything.
Yay. Are you a nay?
Can I, can I actually get a show of?
Let's get a hands. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Three, two.
The vote is three, two?
Yeah, so there's no action taken at all. You need four votes to pass the ordinance. So the majority of the council voted in favor, but you need four votes to pass an ordinance. So the council could make a motion to continue this till December when you're likely to have a full council and have another vote. So it didn't, there's not actually taken at all, it didn't fail.
You change your vote?
I'd like to make a motion to table this till December.
Second.
All right, motion been made?
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. My understanding is once public hearing closes, we don't talk to people who spoke. Because I was prevented from having a conversation.
Yeah, I got, I got you, I got you, I got the meeting.
I tell you.
Yeah, hold on one second, Ms. Baldwin.
Mr. Baldwin, I will tell the public too that state law 16875 says you need a affirmative vote equal to a majority of all the members of the council, including the mayor's vote in case of an equal division to adopt an ordinance. So the way I read that, and the way I've always advised councils, you need four votes to pass an ordinance.
Is that those who are present or those on the council?
It's an affirmative vote of a majority of all the members of council not excused from voting. So no one's been excused due to a conflict. So it's, in my advice, always, four votes are necessary to pass an ordinance.
I've never, I've never seen that.
That is the law.
Well, I thought it was the law, and didn't they change it though?
No.
I thought that they made a modification to it. Because I know it used to be if you didn't have four votes, then they would have to bring it back at the next council meeting. But I could have sworn that they changed that law. Maybe that was something that was different, but.
It takes four votes to pass it, so.
I'd also like the opportunity to speak with some of the residents and property owners. I think having a month to do that is appropriate.
Yeah, I would feel better then also.
And have full confidence in our attorney to give us good advice.
All right, so.
May I have a question?
Yeah.
So if a member's not present, they can't cast a vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So Councilmember Willis is obviously sick tonight and not here, so she can't cast a vote. So I'm trying to figure out where all this sits. Does it mean the majority of those who are present and can cast a vote? Because obviously she can't cast a vote because she's not here. So how's that, is it read that it's the total member, even though they're not here to cast a vote? Are they counted in that number or is it the number of those present? That's my specific question.
The number, it's the entire council has to vote in the majority to pass an ordinance. And the mayor only votes in cases of a tie. So it's the majority of the entire council.
You said ordinance, but we're not passing an ordinance.
Yes, we are, the resoning. The resoning map is an ordinance.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
It is an ordinance, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my question.
You're welcome.
All right, so we've got, we've got a motion to table this till December.
December the 12th.
The 12th, made by Councilmember Scully and was seconded by Councilmember Foreman?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So you don't want to table this?
I think given the conditions in the, given the conditions in the area, I think we had a vote tonight and I would be, I would say we would stay with the vote we had tonight. I understand that my peers on council want to reconsider it in December, and that's fine. I just don't support reconsidering it.
Well, the majority won, right? And so they would just have to come back to us, right? Is that correct?
The question is what, Mayor?
So technically, the majority was in favor of it. So the applicant would just come back to us in December, right? Because then they would have to get four votes at the next meeting. And if they only got three votes in the event that someone's missing again, it would pass. Isn't that right? Isn't that the?
No, it failed tonight.
So to pass an ordinance, you need four votes.
Correct.
So if Ms. Willis was here next month.
But technically, it didn't fail.
No, no, yeah, right. But you need, but you need four votes to pass.
Right. And so, so what I'm saying is, so what I'm saying is, they would come back. If the applicant came back next meeting, isn't the law state that even, let's say, another member was missing and they got three votes and two against, it becomes, it passes? Isn't that the, isn't that the law?
The law says you need four votes. Unless somebody's excused due to a conflict of interest, you need four votes on this council, which includes.
So he could, they could keep coming back over and over again.
If it was three, two, yeah, till you, yeah.
I don't remember, I don't remember that at all. I could have sworn that before, if you came back and you got a majority the second time, it passed. And that's what I remember.
The four would be the majority.
Okay.
But I would say you need four votes to pass the ordinance. It did not pass, it did not fail. And the majority of council voted in favor of it. The council has the discretion to place it on another agenda to vote again.
Okay, so.
4-1.
4-1.
4-1.
For to be brought back December 12th.
December 12th.
Yes.
Okay. All right, move on to the next item. Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 12, ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the definition of a conventional restaurant. I'll call for City Planner Chris Kelly for the press session.
To preface, excuse me. This text amendment is a cleanup to our current definition of a conventional restaurant to better align with the state's definition of a restaurant. On the screen is the state's current, the state's definition of a restaurant. The city's current definition lacks the portion in red, outlined in red. This portion reads, "A restaurant shall also have a kitchen and an inside dining area with seating for at least 10 people. It is not necessary for an establishment to maintain kitchen operations at all times. It is open to the public to qualify as a restaurant." The key words in this definition is that the restaurant needs inside seating for at least 10 people and that the kitchen does not need to operate all operating hours. This text amendment is to add these key points. And another portion of the definition, you will note, is dealing with percentages of sales and alcohol. I will provide some clarification on this in the next slide. To clarify the alcoholic beverage sales, I've made this pie chart. If and only if a restaurant applies and is approved for ABC permits, then they would have to abide by these percentages, which is that the food and non-alcoholic sales of the restaurant must meet 30% at a minimum and vice versa. A restaurant's alcoholic beverage sales cannot exceed 70% of total sales. Once again, these percentages are only relevant if a restaurant chooses and is allowed to sell alcoholic beverages. Alcoholic beverages include beer, wine, spirits, liquor, and mixed beverages. This, once again, is state-regulated. On the screen before you is the city's current definition of a conventional restaurant. If the text is read and strike through, then staff is proposing to remove it from the definition. If the text is read, then staff is proposing to add it to the definition. As you can see, the majority of the definition is strike through. Staff is proposing to simplify this definition. A conventional restaurant is fairly straightforward with what you would assume, such as the proposed first line being of the definition being a facility that prepares and sells food and continues down with accompanying characteristics, such as a sit-down dining area and takeout options, which is what you expect of a conventional restaurant. The cleanup to the definition is the reduction of unnecessary wording and the addition of the bottom line, number seven. As shown here, I'm once again showing the state's definition and the new proposed language at the bottom, number seven. As you can see, they are the same, and I read it once, so I'm not going to read it again. Finally before you is the proposed definition of a conventional restaurant with the removed strike-through language. This definition is more aligned with the state's definition of a restaurant. In staff's opinion, the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, specifically Chapter 4 and Policy 4.3.1. Modernize and diversify local economy. Support the growth of a variety of employment opportunities and businesses that diversify Greenville's economy and provide workers with a range of skill sets and training. Encourage business growth within incorporated areas to expand and diversify Greenville's tax base. Staff is recommending approval. And on October 15, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the request with a vote of three to two. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions, Ms. Kelly?
I've got a couple. Was there a recent change to state statutes? Or was this just a cleanup of our definition?
I think it's just a cleanup of our definition.
Yeah, just to, just to be able to mirror the state.
Yes, sir.
I'm thrown off by two things. The having indoor seating as a necessity. Is there a definition that allows for a type of restaurant that's outdoors? Because we have them.
If we currently have them, they can continue to operate even with this definition language amendment.
But no future permits would be allowed?
It depends, I mean.
Do we offer a non-conventional restaurant? Is there a definition for that?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm also thrown off by the either-or, a drive-thru or counter service? And I'm curious about the reason for that, if there is one.
So I'm not certain of why, but I mean, when you look at a drive-thru restaurant, they typically, or a fast-food restaurant, they typically offer both the drive-thru and the over-the-counter service. So we're differentiating fast food and conventional restaurants.
Well, for example, Sam Jones Barbecue is a conventional restaurant that has counter service and a drive-thru. Don't they have a drive-thru? Am I getting that wrong? Yes. So there's, I think, counter service is becoming a more popular method of service in restaurants, including mine. So I'm just curious about that stipulation and why. Because I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think you could have both. I don't see why that would be a compromise.
So if you, if you look strictly at the definition.
So if you, if you look strictly at the definition of what the ordinance says is an over-the-counter service, it says, uh, "The term shall include both customer ordering and receipt of food except condiments from an order delivery station or counter remote, remote to the on-site place of consumption." So this would be, uh, an, an over, an over-the-counter service that's not, the way I read that is not at the location of the, of the dining service. So I think we would, we could cover it there.
Okay, I'm a little confused. You say it's at the place?
Says from an order, delivery station or counter remote to the on-site place of consumption. So if you had, the way I read that is if it's a remote place, over-the-counter.
But if they have the.
If you have it in the same location, it would be okay.
I'm just curious why, why there would be one or the other. I don't understand what the state concern would be of one or the other.
Yeah, I, I do, the way I read it, I do not take it that it would limit you from having a, a over-the-counter plus a, a, a drive-thru.
Okay, that's my concern.
Says may exhibit one, but not both of the following operational functions or characteristics.
Yeah, five, number five.
Wes, I know we've had discussion, I mean, can you clarify this? Number five, oh, or five B, over-the-counter service?
Well, it's really five. Says both.
One or not both, yeah.
I'm going to be a to, 100% honest with you at this very second. The way, what you're asking, I don't think I have a clear interpretation of that, but if, if you'll give me just a couple of seconds, I will do my best if, if that's doable.
I'm not familiar, you're the professional, restaurant professional. I'm not familiar of a service, I'm sure it exists, everything exists nowadays, but where you would order it somewhere remotely and have it brought to the site? That, that, I've never heard of that. But it sounds like, if I understand correctly, you can have drive-thru and an over-the-counter service. You can still do both.
It's not what it says.
But number five says one, not both.
Says one, but not both, says the following, and it says over-the-counter service, period. And then it expounds upon that a little bit, but.
And that's where it gets confusing, because it says the over-the-counter service is where you order from someplace that's not on-site.
Yeah, that's, that's the term that's kind of confusing, where it says from an order delivery station or counter remote to the on-line, on-line place of consumption.
And then you've got, there's an inside dining area with at least 10 people, so people are still going to be there.
Okay, can I just clarify what I think I'm hearing? What I think I'm hearing is that you can't be just selling alcohol and call your bar a restaurant. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think you nailed it.
You cannot be just selling alcohol and then technically call your bar a restaurant. That's what I hear.
If you offer that.
You're functioning it, if you're calling your place a restaurant, you need to be functioning as a restaurant. That's what I hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I correct?
Because that would account for the remote to the on-site. You can't, you can't be serving only alcohol and then have people order food from somewhere else.
That I kind of agree with. If you're going to be a restaurant, then you need to have some food.
Yeah. I think you nailed it.
Uh, the, the language is confusing.
Yeah.
But I, I, the true intention of this is not to limit you from having a on-site place where you have both a, an over-the-counter and a drive-thru.
Okay, I, I'm sorry to make it complicated. I totally understand the intention, but I really want the language to be correct.
Right.
Um, because, because as it sits now, it, it would, in my opinion, would not allow for a Sam Jones or an Amante, uh, which are both two successful businesses in our community. They do, they both do.
I'm not being a fan, and I was thinking more like a Chili's or Applebee's where they don't have a drive-thru. But I think you threw me off when you said fast-food restaurant, so.
Yeah, fast food is a separate, is a different use than a conventional restaurant.
So you don't want this, but, but you're saying is there are some areas that.
Yeah, there's just a lot of gray in every, every type of business, I guess, but, um, so sorry to make it complicated.
So is there a way we can articulate it that simply says you cannot have, just sell alcohol and call your place a restaurant? Because, I mean.
Can you repeat that question, I'm sorry?
We definitely don't need that, you know? You, you can't sell al, I know we can't, well, we generally are not that plain. I tend to be a little plain and simple, but something that just simply articulates that you cannot be selling alcohol and call your place a restaurant when you're not offering food on-site, is what I'm hearing.
Then that's a bar, if they're not.
Yeah, it's a bar, if it's a bar, we call it a bar.
But this is not a bar, because it's going to have a kitchen, and it's going to have a dining area where seating people.
Appreciate your, your time. Uh, what that is doing, of course, you think of it as two different styles. One, a drive-thru is a, simply a drive-thru. The other is counter sales, where you can get your food and walk out to go. This does not discount sitting in the establishment.
Then, why do we have inside dining, number seven?
That, that part is to match up more with the state's definition.
Yeah, that's what I was, it needs to align with what is in the statute.
That I get and I respect, but shouldn't all of it kind of flow together?
I think the issue here is the, where it says for purposes of this section, over-the-counter service has a certain specific meaning. So I think if I understand correctly, I think Councilmember Scully wants to make sure that it's not prohibiting drive-thru and over-the-counter. And my understanding of the ordinance is that it doesn't do that because of this specific definition of over-the-counter service.
It would not. You, yeah, number five talks about A and B, drive-thru service or over-the-counter service. And we, it further describes over-the-counter service as to include ordering at a counter and to-go, ordering at the counter to be able to sit at the establishment.
Right.
I don't know why we could do that.
So, and, I mean, yeah, if you, I mean, I know it's confusing, but the literal definition would allow you to have an over-the-counter service, because it's, because this requires dining and service.
Correct.
And, and also have a drive-thru at the same location.
All right.
Now, now, I would say, I would make a recommendation, I hate to do this off the cuff, but where it says, number seven, shall have a kitchen and an on-site dining area and takeout inside.
I would like that definition.
Because that would make sure that it has, it would allow for the outs, the outside. It would say shall have a kitchen and on-site dining area.
Yes.
With seating of at least 10.
Uh, can I ask for your opinion and expertise, Matt, on this? Because I trust your judgment. So does that not prohibit someone from just selling alcohol and putting 10 chairs outside their building?
It would, they would have to have a permit, um, from the state to sell alcohol, and they would have to have their sales.
And call it a restaurant because they put 10 chairs outside their building?
Well, you'd have to get a permit for the restaurant and the alcohol sales, and you'd have to have your percentage of sales aligned with the 70 to 30 split. And if, if they had a restaurant that was approved in their house, and they wanted to put some dining outside, I guess they could do that, but, um.
So to, to answer your question, I think, yes, I mean, the literal definition would allow a din, an over-the-counter plus a drive-thru, because you have the, the, the on-site dining area. I would just say that to make it clear, to make it more clear from your point, to say, number seven should shall, shall say, shall have a kitchen and on-site dining area.
I don't know about that. Uh, I mean, yeah, but I just see a bar putting 10 chairs outside and calling it a restaurant at that point.
Oh, no, but they were going to have to, they were still going to have to meet the requirement.
They have to meet all the other requirements.
All the other requirements.
They got to have.
Yes, they got everything. I think this is just to clarify the Amantes and things like that.
Right.
This would not.
Okay.
Keep, prohibit that.
And with your modification, it allows, uh, uh, institutions that might be alfresco. You might have an all-outdoor cafe, which I think would be wonderful.
So would, would, would the, the council be okay with just that one simple change?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion?
So again, it would reach, number seven shall have a kitchen and an on-site dining area with seating, yada, yada. Chris, you got that?
Please put down the ordinance, the yada, yada, yada. Y-A-A-D-A.
Thank you for those clarifications.
Sorry, but I have one more question. It also was a little vague about the, the types of sales that could make up the 30%. Does that have to be food, or is that all, all other sales within the business?
So the language that strike through, that's, that's also found in another section of our zoning ordinance. It's under Section 103. So it outlines, I mean, the food prepared in the establishment's kitchen and served as a meal, so it breaks down what shall be included. So the food prepared and, uh, takeout orders, packaged food sold to accompany the meal. It's sales such as that.
Great. Just wanted to make sure that was in there somewhere.
And you do have to have a kitchen, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Public hearings now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Robinson.
The staff said approve with the changes.
With the modification.
Would you like to restate your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion approved with the modifications as requested, clarified by council members and city manager.
Second.
Wonderful. Motion been made by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Motion passes 5-0.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Last public hearing, item number 14, request to rename Rivers Edge Park as Anes in Fridley Rivers Edge Park. I will call forward our Executive Director of Recreation and Parks and Capitol Projects, Don Ockigan, for the presentation.
We're not going to do 13?
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to the football game.
You fly to Tulsa?
I am sorry, that's embarrassing, I'm sorry. Let me back up.
Aye.
The mayor's gotten it wrong twice, okay?
I thought you were supposed to be supporting me. Aren't you supposed to support the council?
Let me back up. Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13, ordinance requested by the Neighborhood and Business Services Department, Code Enforcement Division, to amend Title 12, Chapter 3, Article A, Section 12-3-1. Definitions, Section 12-3-8 Chronic Violators, and Section 12-3-4 nuisances prohibited, enumeration, subsection L, swimming pools. I will now call forward our Code Enforcement Supervisor Sylvia Brown for the presentation.
Can you read that one more time? I couldn't remember exactly what it said. One more.
What sections are we looking at here?
Ms. Brown, when you passed over, she was about to hit the door, she's like, I'm out.
I stood up, and then I was like, oh, okay, maybe he doesn't want me to. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Uh, tonight, as, um, uh, we will overview the ordinance to amend portions of Title 12, Chapter 3, Article A, and the purpose of these updates are to streamline the enforcement process, to expand the categories in which per, a person or persons might be deemed a chronic violator, to include all public nuisances provided or outlined in the current code, and to expand the items restricted by the nuisance ordinance. So we'll be covering Sections 12-3-1, the definitions, 12-3-8, uh, gives the item for the chronic violator, and 12-3-4 is the list of nuisances that are prohibited at this time, and we'll focus our attention on subsection L for swimming pools. The definition for a chronic violator, the difference and the change that staff is requesting is to delete the B, C, and D, which indicates specific nuisances that a chronic violator can be identified for. And so we would only, we would change it to just 12-3-4, which would include all 21 nuisances that are in the current code. And so this part of code, uh, this text, uh, portion of the code, we just want to mirror the definition. For 12-3-4, subsection L, swimming pools, uh, the restriction would be on any size and any version of a pool located in the front and/or side yard to include but not limit to pools located on any part of the property. So the item in red, the letters in red is what is being added. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing and approving this request to amend Title 12, Chapter 3, Article A, Section 12-3-1, the definitions, Section 12-3-8 Chronic Violator, and Section 12-3-4 Nuisances Prohibited, enumeration, subsection L for swimming pools. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Blackwell.
I do have questions. Uh, thank you very much for that information. When you talk about swimming pools of any size, that means little kiddie pools?
Yes, ma'am.
And does this, when we talk, when we talk about when it becomes a nuisance versus somebody just has a pool in their front yard, at what point does it become a nuisance?
Uh, if it's holding stagnant water, or if it's creating the ground area place for pests and bugs and rodents and things of that nature, if it's attracting pests, that creates a nuisance.
Because I know I've heard about mosquitoes breeding and such.
We actually had, uh, 12 instances this past summer where we had infestations, where the staff had to go and turn the pools over because of the, the issues it was causing with insect infestation.
And you mentioned dead animals. These things, if an animal gets in there, and there's a certain amount of water in there, they're, they're going to, they're not going to make it. So, um, it becomes a hazard to wildlife and to animals at that point. And how many violations does it take before it can be declared a public nuisance?
If code enforcement has to abate three, then that fourth one, they're, after that third one, they become a chronic violator.
Chronic violator?
Right.
And at that point?
But code enforcement has to abate it.
Okay.
So if we notify them of a violation, and the owner or the tenant takes care of it, then that's, that doesn't count towards the three.
Okay.
Code enforcement has to abate it.
Okay, that means somebody just leaves it, even though you've informed them.
Right.
Does nothing, they have to, they have to ignore your request three times, and then on the fourth time, they become a chronic violator. And then at that point, um, I guess, does it, does it become a court matter?
No, ma'am, at that point, staff does not have to, code enforcement does have, not have to provide notification. We can just have our contractor or go out and abate it right away without notifying.
And when you talk about abating, does that mean emptying out the pool, or does that mean removing it?
We would, we would.
We probably have to look into that. Yeah, we don't want to take people's personal property, um, and then we also are restricted on where we can go on the property. And so we, you know, we'd probably try to tread lightly, contact the, definitely make contact at that point before we move forward with anything more.
And then on that fourth time, you still don't take the pool, you just dump it?
Well, at that point, if they, if, if we've had to discuss the pool with the property owner or the tenant at that point, I believe that we could remove the pool from the property. It's just like with any other, like the grass. If we contact you for your grass, and our contractor has to cut it three times, that fourth time, we don't have to contact you. We just have the contract to go out and cut the grass.
And Bill, and the reason for this line of questioning is, if, if these things are an issue, and, and if, if you, if you're able to ignore a pool with mosquitoes and dead animals in it, and you're able to do that three times, I just, I, I'm concerned about our staff time and a certain level of frustration by neighbors, and a certain level of frustration among staff. But if by law, this is really all we can do, I understand that, it just, you know, what, what are we getting at the end of these three violations? We still got to flip that pool back over.
That would probably be, again, we don't want to take people, people's personal property. That would probably be the best solution. Yes, ma'am.
Fines of any kind, fees for this abatement?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know when we, I know that there are often, when you cut their grass, I know that we actually charge the landowner, is that right, for cutting their grass?
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder, do we need a fee for abating the pool?
We, we currently do have that in place. The citation could be issued to the property owner. The citation could be issued to the property owner and/or the tenant.
Okay, and what's the fee for abating a pool?
$100.
Okay, well, that's got a little...
That was updated, I can't remember, it's been a little while ago. So the fees were updated to, the first offense is $100, second offense is $250, third offense is $500, and $500 after that.
Okay, all right. You don't need the pool at that point.
And let me just say, you know, number one, we always seek compliance.
Correct.
We're not out there to be aggressive, but, you know, in certain situations, very limited certain situations, you've got to have tools and toolkits. So again, our number one goal is compliance.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. Sounds good.
May I ask a question? So I'm hoping this is going to put some more teeth. I have a constituent in my district who the pool has not been cleaned for about three years and it looks like a pond, it's generally black almost. And that the code, she has told me that the Code Enforcement said, "Well, I can't do anything about it. They're running the pump." And so I hope that that, if you could send that message back, because I've got pictures of it, it looks like a pond. It does not look like a pool, it's jet black and green and, you know. So I'm hoping that maybe, because she said the code said they can't do anything about it because of the color of it. Maybe that message can get passed along.
Need to share that address.
Thank you, Brown. I'll share that if you do it.
Give it to the Terminator.
Thank you for your work on this project and all the effort to make it better for us.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, item number 14, request to rename Rivers Edge Park as Inez in Fridley Rivers Edge Park. I will again call forward our Executive Director, Don Octagon, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proton Daniels and members of council, hope you're doing okay tonight. I will say, I don't have as much text to read, so I'll relax a little bit in this one. Summary, so I'm here to present a summary, a naming request for Rivers Edge Park. This is a summary of it. Recreation Parks Commission received a community request in July 2024 to name Rivers Edge Park after former Councilmember Inez in Fridley. Mr. Maury York, President of the Tar River University Neighborhood Association, submitted the application on behalf of the board and the membership. The official name request is included in the agenda packet, which includes several letters of recommendations from citizens and nonprofit organizations. And I will add, this has been a long process, as all of our naming requests are, but Mr. York has been great to work with and been in open communication about the whole entire process. Rivers Edge Park, outlined here in red, is at the intersection of, located near the intersection of Elm Street and First Street, located adjacent to the Tar River. The park provides several outdoor recreational opportunities, including our city's only off-leash dog park, picnic shelter, greenway access, multi-purpose field, and open green space. A little bit about Inez Fridley. She was a native of Virginia, moved to Greenville to set up a position at East Carolina University in 1966. She served on the Greenville City Council, representing District 3 from December 1985 until December 2001, serving as Mayor Proton from December 97 to December 99. Ms. Fridley had a strong sense of neighborhood and was a founding member of the Tar River Neighborhood Association, as well as serving on several committees, which I'll share later, including a member of the Rotary Club. Some of her accomplishments, as she served a council member, she served on several commissions, Greenville Utilities Commission, Greenville Historic Preservation Commission, and Recreation Parks Commission. She was instrumental in leading the city's efforts to obtain a $298,000 grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to help fund the initial segment of the city's greenway system. She also championed the establishment of the Greenville Historic Preservation Commission and the local College View Historic District. Community engagement, she's served on many organizations I mentioned, Tar River Neighborhood Association, Relief, Frogs, Greenville New Rotary Club, Tate County Arts Council, M.A.R.E.G. And summary, the naming request was submitted in accordance with the city's naming request policy for Recreation Parks facilities. Per the naming request, Rivers Edge Park embodies several of Ms. Fridley's passions, preservation of the Tar River watershed, dedication to neighborhood revitalization, establishment of the greenway system, and planting of trees by relief. On the official application request for the park is to be named Inez in Fridley Rivers Edge Park. And as quoted here, found in the application, just kind of sums up the summary. Ms. Fridley worked throughout her adult life to improve the quality of life for the public in Greenville and beyond, I think just sums up her commitment to our community. At the September 11th, 2024 meeting, the Recreation Parks Commission unanimously voted to recommend council approve the naming request for Rivers Edge Park. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Octagon?
Not a question, but for the public, can you state what the city's naming policy is?
Sure. The member of a community can submit a name request to the Recreation Parks Commission. It's reviewed by staff, and then we present it to the Recreation Parks Commission for approval. At that point, we ask Recreation Parks Commission to approve it to go forward to council, which they did in this case. And now we're here before you to present the naming request as it was presented to us from the community.
Mr. Attorney, in reference to naming the parks, what are the guidelines?
Well, in addition to that, a member, as far as naming a park, an individual has to be deceased six months before a park can be named for them.
Okay, that's what I want the public to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I defer to Mr. Octagon, he stated the policy.
Yes, yeah. Small detail.
Thank you, Attorney Octagon.
Many hats.
Legal counsel. All right. Any questions for Mr. Octagon? We good? Let's get to the fun part. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Maury York, speaking on behalf of the Tar River University Neighborhood Association. But I wanted to emphasize that our organization collaborated closely with members of one of Inez Fridley's book clubs, the PIFs, some of whom are also members of TRUNA. We deeply appreciate this assistance as well as that of the individuals who wrote letters of support on behalf of other organizations Ms. Fridley served with distinction. Members of some of these groups will speak after I finish my brief remarks. We strongly believe that the naming of Rivers Edge Park for Inez in Fridley is merited, not only because of her extraordinary record of service as a member of the Greenville City Council and leader of numerous civic organizations, but also because the park encapsulates Inez's passionate interest in service, development of Greenville's greenway system, preservation of the Tar River watershed, the planting of trees by relief, and neighborhood vitality. All of this and more is reflected in the application we submitted, which I'm sure you read. But I want to share two stories that reflect Inez's character, which underpinned everything she did. When Inez was first elected to the Greenville City Council, she received a call from someone at City Hall saying that she needed to provide some personal information so she could receive her monthly paycheck. She was astounded because she had no idea that she would be paid for serving on the city council. She had run simply because she wanted to serve and thought she could make a positive difference for all of Greenville citizens. Each time she ran for reelection, her campaign literature always referenced friends and neighbors for Inez Fridley. She once told me that she much preferred small donations from people in her district, and indeed, that she turned down offers of large donations from people who might want to ask for favors during her term. She wanted to do what was best for everyone, not special interests. In short, Inez brought her integrity to bear on all she did. That combined with her vision, intelligence, and drive enabled her to achieve great things for her adopted home of Greenville. On a personal note, I would like to say that I go to that park almost every day with my Boston Terrier, whose name Winston. Winston loved Inez Fridley, and he loves that park. And he wanted me to tell you that he is very much in favor.
Could he not be present today? Could he not be present today?
He's asleep. But I also wanted to mention that every day, or many days when I go, I hear an owl in the woods near the river and also see a flock of bluebirds who perch on the fence surrounding the dog park and then drop down and drink out of the dog dishes there at the park. And I see those birds and I hear that owl and I think about Inez. And that's just another reason why I think this is such an appropriate naming opportunity. I hope you will act favorably on this request from Inez's friends and neighbors to honor one of this city's most dedicated public servants. And I'd like to ask those who came in support of this to stand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. York. Thank you for everybody that came too. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Charlie Adams. And, let's see, what else do I need to do? My name for the record.
You're good.
Okay, I was, knew Inez very well. And I was in on the founding of the Pamlico Tar River Foundation. And one of the first things we did, as I was twice president of that, and one of the first things we did was to organize an advisory council. One of the first people we thought of to help us with the mission of the Pamlico Tar River Foundation, later to become Sound River Foundation, was to get Inez to be on the advisory council. She further helped us with many things and all involving water and nature and that sort of thing. And the idea of naming the Rivers Edge Park, and eventually, that park has so much potential to connect people with the river and the environment they live in. It's just appropriate to recognize her community service with, not just community, but statewide. She worked with me as a member of the Marine Fishers Commission. And so I was, sought her advice very often and thought the world of her. So I think it's appropriate that we name the park for her. It was her passion, and I think that things can come from that park. For example, trails, maybe even connection with Washington and that sort of thing, with a running trail or that sort of thing. I think all of that can come in the future. I think that Inez is the ideal person to name this for, and that's really all I got to say. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Adams. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Good to see you again, Charlie. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Greenville City Council members and the public. My name is Jamie Jones, and I represent the nonprofit organization Friends of Greenville Greenways and its support of the proposal to name Rivers Edge Park, located near the Ash Street Trailway head of the South Tar River Greenway, in memory of Inez Norwood Fridley. Naming this park for Inez would honor her decades-long efforts to preserve our natural environment and to encourage local citizens to engage in outdoor recreational activities. Such activities contribute greatly to the physical and mental health of our citizens. As a years-long member of our organization, Inez consistently supported Frog's efforts to advocate for greenway expansion and to maintain the existing pathways through cleanups, invasive species removal, the addition of amenities such as benches and picnic tables, and improved signage. We are especially grateful to her during her, as during her eight terms as a city council member, she advocated for the creation of our city's first greenway and played an important role in securing a major grant to construct its first phase in the 1990s. This beautiful 2.5-mile section of the greenway, which my family, friends, and I personally walk and ride on frequently, conveniently connects Green Springs Park to Elm Street Park, and thus was an ideal corridor for this path. Not only did Inez serve tirelessly on our city council as a greenway advocate, but she was also a member and chair of the Greenville Environmental Advisory Commission, a founder and president of the Tar River Neighborhood Association, a member of the Pamlico Tar River Foundation Advisory Council, and a member of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club. The proposed location to bear Inez's name, Rivers Edge Park, contains trees planted by the nonprofit organization Relief and of which Inez also served as president. She was a true force for positive change in our beautiful city and deserves this public recognition for her dedication and hard work. The Friends of Greenville Greenways strongly supports the naming of Rivers Edge Park after Inez Fridley for having been a tireless advocate for the greenway.
That's time.
The natural environment and the health and well-being of all Greenville citizens. Thank you.
You have a lot left?
That was it.
Was that it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public hearing? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Ann Maxwell. And Inez was a good friend for 40 years. And for all of us who are here tonight, who called her a friend, she was the person we called when we had significant life events. We also would call her when we'd read a good book, been to a play, or just to talk about the beauty of the morning. She loved to share the birds that she was enjoying or to tell us about the native azaleas that were blooming in her backyard or invite us to come and look at one of her amazing camellia bushes. She understood how to be a good, understanding, and compassionate friend. She was not just a compassionate friend, she was a compassionate leader in our city. She was truly a visionary. She loved Greenville and could always see ways to preserve its beauty or ways that we could enhance it and make it better. Our friendship started when Inez was serving on the city council. And my family, we had very young children, so I wasn't very involved. And I was thrilled to have somebody with her compassion doing the work that I believed in. And when our children were small, we always helped her with her elections. She worked with others to save the Green Street Bridge that we all enjoy now as a part of our greenway. Her visionary leadership included working for walkable neighborhoods, greenways, historic preservation, tree preservation, environmentally sustainable development, and healthy waterways. environmentally sustainable development, and healthy waterways. In fact, Marion, I found an article, 2004 article, from the Daily Reflector where she was fighting to save the park on 33. And she made comments that would really relate to what you all have been talking about today, because this park is about a half a mile from the rezoning request that's been tabled. And she talked about, she says, if the land is sold and developed, runoff will increase from the paving associated with apartments and other commercial structures. And she was saying this after flooding had occurred. But I want to get back to my other thoughts. I want to think about her legacy. I want us to think about ways that we can continue her work, because her vision has only been partially realized. In 2014, in an article in the Daily Reflector, she said, "I worked to create a city ordinance to limit tree clearing," but that never happened. "Ten years later, it has not happened, but we can do it." She worked to get the bike lanes on Fifth Street, but that was just to be the beginning to spark the work for a bikeable city. We cannot let her dreams die. With her name on the sign in the park, we will be reminded of her dream. Hopefully, young girls in the future will read her name and ask, "Who is Inez Fridley? Why is her name on that marker?" And her inspiration can continue. She always loved owls and talked about listening to the owls when she lived next to the river before her home was flooded by flooding. Owl ornaments decorated her home and a Christmas tree. One of her friends and fellow environmentalists, Amy Hannan, wrote a poem that you have in the application. Amy Hannan wanted to be here tonight, but she lives in New Jersey. Inez's dear friend Brenda Ernest will read that poem now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maxwell. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public hearing, or excuse me, during the public hearing? Please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Sorry, I have to do it. These terrible council members make me follow the policy. I'm just kidding.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Ernest, and I am a very old friend, old and an old friend of Inez Fridley. I had so much respect and love for what she believed in and what she lived. And so I was proud to be able to read this poem from Amy Hatton. I myself am not a poet. But she wrote about this because Amy is a poet and loved Inez as we did, too. "For Inez and her totem, even now, I cannot hear an owl or a sudden silent swooping through the air without thinking of you, Inez, lover of these nocturnal spirits with their staring eyes that see what we can only dream. Who, 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 do you hear them still? Have they lent you now the ability to see in the dark and appreciate invisibles? We think of you, Inez, and of Athena's bird, Athena who governs not only politics but craft. We offer praise for the wisdom you both embody and prayers for its continued dissemination. And you, oh mysterious nocturnal fowl, given the chance, how would you vote about naming Rivers Edge Park after our friend Inez? I imagine you would say your usual who, 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 while the river, the trees, the fish, and all the other owls respond in approval, remembering with us our dear beloved Inez. I hope you will consider this. Thank you."
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing? Please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. All right, seen none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. All right, seen none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or motion. Hmm, let me see, does anybody want to say? Anybody at all? Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, thank you, and this is in the heart of my district. And just first of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who came out tonight. You spoke so beautifully and very movingly about Inez, and that is so appreciated. I wanted to add some additional thoughts. She started off in the old at-large system. And when that was found to be, to unfairly exclude minority representation, she then won her district and continued to hold it for 16 years. When she was talking about greenways, got to remember, Greenville was largely surrounded by farmland, and frankly, still included farmland. Greenways were just a concept that had not been talked about before. And so it was really so forward-thinking at that time to talk about something like a greenway. In 1999, as was mentioned, she lost her home to flooding, which was a very sad event for her. And I wanted to go back to the article that Ms. Maxwell talked about. In 2004, when I started this Save the Park effort, it was me and about five other people who wanted to keep that land from getting sold for development. And I said, "Well, we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna do this right. We're gonna have a press conference," because of my background in journalism. And Inez showed up, and she continued to strongly support our efforts to save Eastside Park from being developed. And how grateful I was for that, because to have someone of Inez's stature and credibility to come, to be part of that effort right from the start just had immense value and just personally meant so much to me. In 2009, when I first ran for her district, for the seat she held for so long, she was among the first people to support me, and we talked a lot, and she often provided guidance and support, and how much I appreciated that. I knew that Inez, if I wanted to try to see all the sides of an issue, I could count on her to help me flesh it out, because she had probably dealt with something similar or knew how it could go, even when you can't see the other side of an issue. Just in conclusion, I'd like to say that Inez was a very, very worthy citizen who not only had immense, did immense good while she was on the council, but she set in place so many programs and so much vision that has allowed our city to grow the way that it has. And so with that conclusion, with concluding my personal reflection of her, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Protam Daniels. Any other discussion?
I would just say that Inez was a friend of mine also. And as I was considering running for council, was one of a list of people that I spoke with to encourage me to do so, and I considered her wise counsel. She was fair, she was comprehensive, she was caring, and I saw her to be very capable also. And so, just wanted to elevate that and my appreciation for her.
Thank you very much, anyone else? I mean, I will say, too, I mean, sometimes I feel like it's kind of bittersweet, too, because you wish that she were here to be able to see the recognition that she's going to receive. But thankfully, generations, future generations will be able to see her name. And like one of the speakers had said, hopefully, they'll see that name, and then it will engage them to go ahead and do some research and see what she stood for and the leadership that she provided for our city for so many decades, for so many years, I should say, a couple decades, 16 years, is that what you said? So spanning two decades. But thank you guys for coming today, I think that's great. You know, I think this was a good testament, and this is something that'll be in the records forever to show how much you appreciate her, and hopefully, her family will see the same thing. We got a motion on the table, properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. That's a good way to end the public hearings. All right, let's move on to other items of business.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number 15, Ordinance Amending Chapter III of Title VI of the Greenville City Code entitled Garbage and Refuge Collection and Disposal. I will now call forward our Solid Waste Manager, Delbert Bright, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
What we're going to discuss is, we're going to revisit what we brought to you in October, which was revisions for our ordinances. And one of the items was about refuse carts. And we wanted to clear up that you could purchase a cart from the city or from another vendor. All carts must be approved for city use. We show here what we offer, or what we allow the citizens to buy from us, which is $90 per cart, which includes delivery and removal of the old cart. We currently have parts to repair these carts, the lids, the wheels. It also comes with a warranty, and it provides uniformity to the neighborhoods. Also, you could buy the cart from a retail vendor. The cost is more than $100 from what we've been able to find out, and the owner will be responsible for all aspects. The second item was receptacles. We wanted to define the time that the carts could be at the curb, which is noon the day prior to the service. And it must be removed from the curb by noon the day following the service. But all old carts must be at the curb by 6:00 a.m. for service. Any questions?
Did a nice job. Eloquent, eloquent.
Recommendation from staff is the council approved the proposed code changes presented as it relates to solid waste services in Section VI of the city ordinance.
We need Delbert to give more presentations. I love the presentations. That was great, a couple slides to the point.
He wastes no time in getting to the point.
And you command the stage, I love it, I love it. We're good.
I do have a question.
Yes.
How's that whole honest warranty on those carts? We get a lot of them, since we went to the side loaders. Lids falling off, wheels falling off, that kind of thing. Do we just repair and replace if our own damage?
If they were purchased from the city, the warranty applies. Currently, the warranty is 10 years.
Thank you.
And that's all parts. The city replaces them, you call us up, let us know, and we will make arrangements to see if we can repair them.
Thank you.
No, they do a great job. The city does a great job, I'm telling you, you want to buy your carts from the city. I mean, just from personal experience, buying lots of carts, the ease of it. They pick up the old cart, they drop off the new cart. They pick up the old dumpster, they take it and drop down the new one. The city does an outstanding job. Delbert, you do a wonderful job.
Thank you, I'll certainly share that with my staff also.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, properly second. You got that, Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you to the staff, too, on that, for listening to the feedback to the council and making the modifications the way they did, and moving forward with it, that was very efficient, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't be trashy, keep it classy.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next item, item number 16, our Title VI Non-Discrimination Program. I will call forward our Training and Development Specialist, Jessica Carter, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to talk about the Title VI Non-Discrimination Program. What is Title VI? It's the federal law. Title VI is Civil Rights Act of 1964. Means no person in the United States shall be discriminated against based on race, color, or national origin under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987, no discrimination across all City of Greenville programs and activities, whether federally assisted, state-funded, or locally funded, and the retaliation. What is Title VI? So, other protective bases the city's going to include in their non-discrimination program based on race, color, national origin, specifically limited English proficiency, disability, gender, age, low-income minorities focusing on environmental justice, religion, and retaliation. Role of the Title VI program for the city? Designation of a Title VI coordinator, myself, Jessica Carter. Identified liaisons for all City of Greenville departments, so 13 liaisons are identified. City of Greenville will train annually. Title VI coordinator will maintain a record of training for all employees. Develop and administer the City of Greenville's Title VI programs and policies. Prepare, submit Title VI implementation plan where necessary. Implement the city's complaints process. Investigate, resolve claims of discrimination. Review and assist the development of the city's programs directives to ensure that Title VI requirements are included. We're going to provide education, public notices, and technical assistance to all city departments, subrecipients, contractors, and the public. We're going to submit reports to federal and state oversight agencies where necessary and ensure the city's subrecipients and contractors are all complying with the federal non-discrimination requirements, compliance reviews, corrective actions, sanctions, et cetera. These are the postings that we're going to post around the city. We're going to post both the Title VI Non-Discrimination Policy Statement as well as a Title VI Notice. We're going to put those in conspicuous areas. Facility bulletin boards, city website, public transit fleet, city on facilities, and anywhere else we deem necessary. The city recommends that the city council to adopt this Title VI Non-Discrimination Program. It was presented at workshop last month, and we're carrying this Title VI program forward for adoption.
All right, any questions?
Right.
What the heck?
Many years ago, I think it was 2012, the city passed a non-discrimination ordinance, I guess it would have been, policy. Is that, will that become part of this? Or are they considered separate, or?
No, I would say it would be a component of the program.
Another program, okay. I think they're very similar. I think that 2012 may have covered gender expression as well.
Right. We're just going to make sure that our contractors and subrecipients are including the Title VI Non-Discrimination Language and things like that as well. So it's all encompassing.
That is the major difference here, is the fact that we have a non-discrimination policy, but it's important that in order to follow federal law, you've got to have all the language within the contracts that we have for services provided to the city. So this will ensure that we're putting all that state and federal language regarding non-discrimination that must be there in order for us to be able to receive the federal state funds. So that's why this, it's actually taking another step, so yes, it is incorporating the program, but it's actually taking the next.
And this is the federal Title VI?
That's right.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Foreman, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next, item number 17, National Opioid Settlement Update Resolutions for the Interlocal Agreement and Direction of Funds. I will now call forward our Program Manager, Renee Skeen, for this presentation.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
As I know, we're going to be talking about the National opioid Settlement Update. This item was addressed at the workshop back in October, and now is being presented for adoption. All right, the overview of the settlement, this slide provides an overview of the funds available for the city in Pitt County. The settlement provides funding for up to 18 years, with the city receiving 1.89 million and Pitt County receiving 15.94 million. Currently, there's a little over $500,000 available for immediate expenditure to support our local response to the opioid crisis. Permitted uses are such as recovery support, transitional housing, employment training, prevention programs, and Narcan distribution. These funds will support sustainable initiatives to combat the opioid crisis. Pitt County has set up several programs using the settlement funds, working with partners, to maximize impact. Examples include Narcan Distribution, Needle Exchange Program, fentanyl awareness campaigns, medication-assisted treatment, peer recovery support, and diversion programs. Here's an outline of the advantages of partnering with the Here's an outline of the advantages of partnering with the, between the city and the county. It's a regional approach to opioid challenges, allows us to leverage existing resources and provide a comprehensive care framework. The partnership improves efficiency, transparency, and ensures that both Greenville and Pitt County benefit from sustainable opioid response initiatives. The county has an opioid settlement coordinator, which will streamline fund management, ensure compliance, and avoid duplication of services, allowing city staff to focus on expanding and enhancing the program. Back in October of twenty twenty-four, just last month, we did have a stakeholders' meeting here at City Hall, and we discussed the current initiatives, identified community needs, and highlighted benefits of the countywide approach. Coming up, January of twenty twenty-five, there are planned community meetings. There will be three held in Greenville, then also Winterville, Aiden, Gripton, and Faville. It's the opportunity to gather input and focus on key priorities, such as the development of transitional housing and the establishment of a single entry portal. Okay, here are the next steps that we're proposing. Approval of the interlocal agreement to formalize collaboration with the county. Also, allocation of funds, immediate allocation of current settlement funds, coordination with the DOT, North Carolina Department of Justice. We are requests from the NCDOJ, I said DOT earlier, to work with the settlement administrators to direct all future settlement funds to Pitt County effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Here are the staff recommendations. First, to approve the resolution and interlocal agreement with Pitt County for allocation of current and future opioid settlement funds. And the second is to approve the attached resolution and letter to the North Carolina Department of Justice to direct all future opioid settlement funds to Pitt County. And I also want to say tonight, we have folks from the county back with us again, Angela Manning, Public Health Deputy Director, and Caitlin Houston. She's our opioid, our county's opioid settlement coordinator, and they'll be here to answer any questions.
Are you guys Pirate fans? Hey, blame her. You know I'm just picking on you. I'm just picking on you. Do we got any questions?
I know we had a lot, had a good conversation at that workshop, so thank you for the information you provided then. It's good to see you again.
Anybody want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number eighteen, order to amend the manual fees to add premium supervisor rate for police officer, police off-duty fees. I'll call for our chief financial officer, Jacob Joyner, quick presentation.
Quick.
Hey. Smart city manager, also a Pirate fan.
I'll do my best.
It's got to be first quarter at least by now.
First quarter is ended. But who's looking?
We got a manual fee change. This will be adding fee to the police section, which will be for a premium supervisor off-duty fee at fifty-five dollars an hour. And the purpose for this is due to the number of off-duty officers present at a job, a supervisor is sometimes required. We do have a premium rate for officers, so this is just adding an additional premium rate for the supervisor specifically. And we ask that council approve this change.
Hey, you and Delbert are like on the same page right now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Council, or to me. Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Quick question, is that fifty-five dollars the rate or is that in addition to the rate?
That's the rate.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be a lot of money. It may just work.
All right, let's see if you can make the next slides into two, or the next presentation into two slides.
All right, let's do it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number nineteen, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Four to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number Twenty-four dash zero three eight, Capital Project Funds Ordinance Number Seventeen dash zero two four, Special Revenue Grant Fund Ordinance Number Eleven dash zero zero three, and the ARPA Fund Ordinance Number Twenty-one dash zero five three. Again, ask our chief financial officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
This budget amendment number four will be impacting the following funds, which will be the city operating funds, capital project funds, special revenue grant fund, as well as the ARPA fund. Item A will be to close out the transfers to other funds line in the Fire Rescue Capital Project Fund. This will decrease that project fund by five hundred thousand dollars. Item B will be to move appropriations from our transfers out in the general fund to the finance department for parking equipment. That will have no overall net change on the general fund. Item C will move appropriations from contingency to the city manager's office. That will be in the general fund as well. That will have no overall net change to the general fund. Item D will be to recognize funds received for the assistance.
Little suspect there.
Now, I'm going to pause, Jacob, right there, because basically what that does is that that is funding a retail analysis on the north side of the river for pharmaceutical services.
There you go.
Hey, maybe you should have put that in the writing then.
Several meetings already with ECU Health as well as the contractor who's doing the study, so I am aggressively pursuing.
Yes.
Healthcare services north of the river.
That's right. Good job.
Keep on going.
It's a carry-on.
Item D will be recognized funds received for the assistance for firefighters grant. That will increase the special revenue grant fund by ninety-seven thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. Item E will be to reallocate funding within ARPA projects from the Fourth Street Project to the Public Works Drainage Pipe. This will have no overall net change in the ARPA project, and this is just leftover funding that we need to get allocated by the end of the year.
How much was left over in that?
Two hundred dollars.
So, yeah.
Put that pipe, definitely fix that pipe, ten million dollar pipe.
I'll pay the water bill.
Item F will be to recognize grant received for the sanitation fund, which will increase the sanitation fund by fifty thousand dollars. And item G will be to establish the East Fire Tower Stormwater Project, which will increase the Stormwater Capital Project Fund by eighteen point seven million dollars.
Was F the grant that we got? What would happen if we wouldn't have passed that and we wouldn't accepted the grant? Would you have made a modification to the budget ordinance?
Well, we wouldn't, we just wouldn't be doing the project.
Well, we'd have to change the budget ordinance, right?
Yeah, we'd have to.
That brings the city overall operating budget to one hundred ninety-one point six million dollars. And we ask that council approve budget ordinance amendment number four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Good job, Mr. Joyner.
City manager's report, okay, all right, I got a, I got a request here to cancel some meetings, so I'm going to go through, there's three of them here, I'm going to go through them one by one.
Oh, my gosh.
So, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday, November twenty-fifth, which is the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay.
I would request that we, we don't have any additional agenda items for this month, so I request that we cancel that. We also have a Monday scheduled for, believe it or not, December twenty-third, which is Christmas Eve Eve. We have, so we have three meetings in December, the first two on the ninth and the twelfth, but this is the third meeting, and I'm just going to ask that y'all want to spend the two days before Christmas here with me.
You have a Christmas party.
Everybody wants to be a grinch.
So, request that we cancel that meeting. And then also, I'm going to request that we cancel the January sixth council meeting, which is, that's the Monday meeting. We will also have a meeting on Thursday, the ninth, and we also have the planning retreat on December, on January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which is the Friday and Saturday. As liaison to the Housing Authority, Councilmember Foreman and I have been invited to go to the Public Housing Authority Commissioners Conference on Management and Operation of Housing Authorities, and which, you know, we want to get as much information as we can about their operations so that we can assist based off of what we do with the Housing Authority. So that coincides with the week of the meetings. That conference actually goes from January, the, it goes from the January fifth through the eighth, and that coincides with the Monday meeting. So we would ask, since we already have a meeting scheduled on that Thursday, plus we have the planning retreat, that we would cancel that meeting so that we can go learn more about the operation of housing authorities.
That'll be good. I can't wait to get some feedback.
Well, we can't wait to give it to you.
That'll be very interesting.
I'm very interested in being able to share with you that information.
I can't wait. So we got a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
We got the whole thing?
Eleven twenty-five, twelve twenty-three, one oh six.
Okay, so in the spirit of Thanksgiving, we know we'll be enjoying the holiday with our family and friends, and this is a great opportunity to talk about the two-hundred fiftieth anniversary of the city. And during, in our reflection series, this month, we are spotlighting Jeff Jenkins, who is the son of ECU Chancellor Leo Jenkins, as he talks about a tradition that he and others use to enjoy each Thanksgiving, the pickup football game known as the Turkey Bowl. So Brock, let her rip.
Some of the best football ever played in Greenville was played at Elm Street Park on Sunday afternoons. This was when I was a little older, sixteen, eighteen, even until I was twenty, twenty-two years old, we'd play pickup games. Again, no coaches, no umpires, no referees. We'd choose upsides and play tag football. More times than not, Ronald Vincent, who's the all-time winningest coach in North Carolina, I believe in any sport, was generally the quarterback on one team. Joe West, who is the major league, has umpired more Major League Baseball games than anybody in the history of Major Leagues, was generally the quarterback on the other team. And Ronald would draw up a play in the dirt, and we'd go out there and play, and play all afternoon, Thanksgiving afternoon, the Turkey Bowl. Every year, we played tag football on Thanksgiving afternoon, and it was just pickup games. That's the point I'm trying to make. And I think it's a shame in a lot of degrees that for my kids and for what I can see, other kids don't have that same experience to the extent that we did. Theirs is more organized sports.
That was neat.
And finally, Mayor, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I would like to say happy Thanksgiving to all of our employees, every single one. We are thankful every single day for the service they provide to our community, and I hope that they all have a very wonderful time to spend with their family and their friends, and just to be able to have thanks as well for everything that they do, again, to protect and serve our community every single day. So, so thank you to our great employees. You are this month's city manager shout-out, because you're awesome, you're the best in the world. Thank you.
Very nice, very nice, very nice. Councilmember Blackburn, why don't you start us off?
Okay, well, super, I certainly will, thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate our city manager sort of doing a shout-out to all city employees, because that's really the, sort of the focus of my comments during the national election. I know that some people were, have been terribly discouraged, and others have been terribly over-encouraged. And I think as we see what plays out nationally, it's important for us to think of our local government, because that really belongs to all of us. And I think what I'm feeling now is a greater dedication than ever to participating in local government and being active in local government, because it really does belong to all of us. Here in Greenville, I am very proud to take part of a very solid council of elected leaders. We don't always agree, but we are always courteous, we always follow process, operations. I know that Councilmember Foreman talks about order of operations. We've got a trustworthy attorney who provides guidance when we need it, and just how important that is to me as an elected official and for our community. We have staff that is committed to the public good. There are no secret agendas. They care about our community, every staff member, and I've met so many of them, and how, what a good job they do, and take such pride in their work. So that's, that's really the gist of my, that first part of my comments, is that now is really a time for us to say, wow, our local government belongs to all of us, and how important it is, and how important it is for all of us to take part in this public process that makes our community so great. I got a couple more comments. Somebody mentioned Thanksgiving, and, you know, Thanksgiving is a time where we can feel grateful, and I think most people at this point know that I'm an ethical vegan, and I just encourage folks, if you can, think about being grateful without harming another living being. There are so many good foods now that don't require meat, dairy, or eggs, and maybe this Thanksgiving will be the Thanksgiving that you try one of those out. There are so many options, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
Really quick, I just would like to elevate that I was really happy to hear the mention of a single portal entry program for the people in our community that are struggling and suffering, whether it be with drug abuse or housing insecurity or food insecurity, somewhere centralized that they can go to find the resources that they need to get help. Then to elevate again, Aneesh Friendly and her being a servant leader, and me being happy to know that we've all agreed to have that park named in her honor. And lastly, just to say to Matt that I care for you and will be continuously praying for you and your family. I've been where you are, and if you need anything at all, I'm just a phone call away.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A successful machine is only as good as the units within it, the cogs and the wheels and everything else. We look mighty fine up here as council members, but every day I try to be thankful for what everybody in the city does, all our various departments and the wheels that go into play, from those who collect up these bins we've talked about tonight, to those who run the Utilities Commission, to everybody, including our staff that makes us look great. Thank you to every one of you and your families. Have an awesome Thanksgiving, and if you travel, be safe in your travels. And again, I can't tell you how much I appreciate, along with my fellow councilmembers, everything you do to keep this city running great. Makes me proud to be a citizen here and be a part of all this. Number two, as we celebrate Thanksgiving, be careful if you're traveling, enjoy your food and whatever you eat. Please be mindful of our neighbors to the far west. You know, an event comes, and sometimes the tragedy is lost in the media, but the recovery still goes on. We know from nineteen ninety-nine what we were exposed to, and this is even apparently more catastrophic than that event. So let's be mindful of our neighbors to the west and the great product tonight that come up that speak to that. Hope you'll call that young lake, because our neighbors to the west are going to continue to need things as they rebuild. It's going to be years in the process, so if you have opportunity to donate your time, energy, resources, finances, whatever, please pick out a charity of your choice and do so, and keep those people up there in your thoughts and prayers as they try to recover from such a devastating event, because I can't only imagine what it was like, and I was here from ninety-nine, so I know what our city experienced, and it's got to be amazingly bad up there. So please keep those in your prayers and thoughts and do what you can to help. Congratulations to our ECU basketball team, they are rolling, Mayor. They scored a bunch of points on, is it Monday night, Tuesday night? They're doing well, what, three and oh now, I believe? To the girls' ECU soccer team, they are rolling right along. Our football team tonight, if less would be quiet and get us out of here. Thank you to all those, and enjoy those sports if you have a chance. Man, what an awesome thing tonight. That young man Reed, when he spoke.
Yes.
I mean, you know, be put on the spot by all of us in the spotlight and do such a wonderful job. I can only imagine seeing that young man speak to his fellow players, trying to get them pumped up, and what a, what a awesome. So Reed, if you're watching this at home, man, we're so proud of you and so proud of your team and the coaches, you're not just building athletes. your team, and the coaches, you're not just building athletes, you're building young men, and you're instilling in them what, what they should be like when they grow up to become men. So, coaches, thank you for that, and it certainly plays into Sports Town USA, keep going, man. And to our, our councilmembers tonight, Portia, we're thinking about you. Get well quick, we miss you, we hope you get well quickly, and come back and see us soon. All my fellow councilmembers, enjoy the holidays, be careful traveling, enjoy your families, be thankful, because even in the worst of times, we still have things to be thankful for. So, be mindful of those, and please think about those who do not have what we have up here, and are less fortunate from housing, as Councilmember Foreman said, to food and everything else. I think, I think I've covered everything. Yep, I think I did. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Outstanding, outstanding. Councilor Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I always like to mention the construction downtown. It continues. We're gonna have a very beautiful downtown, but right now, it's a little bit of a mess, which is okay, because it's progress. It's gonna be really great. If you're coming downtown, use Fourth Street or Tenth Street. And please continue to support those businesses. We are gonna have a really beautiful downtown, but I really want us to have a successful business community there when we reopen those streets. So, please go support your local businesses down there and give them some love, and, you know, do some Christmas shopping down there, that's about to come up. I always try to do some Christmas shopping downtown when I have the opportunity, so go and, and give those businesses some love, and spend your dollars here in Greenville. I wanted to say thank you to my fellow councilmembers for the support you gave me when I went to Western North Carolina to volunteer with Emerged Ministries at Cragmont Assembly, which is a Baptist camp near Black Mountain, North Carolina. I had the blessing of being the cook for the volunteers there, there were about a hundred and twenty volunteers, running a hurricane relief center out of the camp, doing amazing work. They're feeding four to five thousand people a day. They have a huge warehouse, they turned the gym into a warehouse, that they're receiving supplies into, organizing, and setting it up as a store with groceries and building supplies, cleaning supplies, all kinds of things. They also have crews of people going out with heavy machinery, fixing driveways, repairing ditches, doing amazing, amazing, amazing work. They brought a generator up the mountain to a woman on a little off-road vehicle, because there was no road access. Just crazy, beautiful stories of people helping out, helping one another out, and doing the right thing. So happy that I had the opportunity to go up there, and so thankful. For all the people in our community, I wanna say thank you to anybody who's done anything to support the people of Western North Carolina. Like you mentioned, we've been through it here, and it'll happen again, and we're gonna need help one day. God forbid, but we know it's always a risk. We live on the coast, and it could happen any year. So, just so thankful for this community, and proud to be a member of this community, and was, was proud to go. The thing that really inspired me to go was a little conversation I had with Chief Salz. He said, we were just talking about what to give, what to buy, and, you know, what kind of supplies they might need, and he's like, they really need manpower, is what they really need. They're getting a lot of supplies, and I was like, yeah. I guess, and I, I just felt that in my soul, like, you gotta go. You're a man, you're able, you can cook, you can move things around, you know. I'm not super handy, but I'm a little handy, I can do whatever needs to be done. I can sweep the floor, I can load the truck, I can cook the eggs. And so, it was just a really, really great experience to be there. So proud to represent this council and this community and the work I did there, so thank you. And last but not least, is a, is a combination of things. It's Men's Mental Health Month, so get ready, I'm gonna cry a little bit. And I just wanna say about that, it's okay for guys to be sad, it's okay for guys to be home well.
That's fine.
You know, bad things happen to good people, so it's okay. You know, it's okay to ask for help, it's okay to cry a little bit, it's okay to miss people, and it's okay to be vulnerable, because you're showing your strength. You're showing your neighbors and your family that it's okay to be not okay, because that's a step to getting better, is to start that journey. So, if you're missing somebody, if, if you're having a hard time, you know, ask for help, lean on your family, lean on your friends, and if you need it, go find some professional help from a counselor or, or a physician who can help you out. Go do it, take care of yourself, you deserve it, your family deserves it, and your community deserves it. So, thank you, everybody, for your support this week. My mom died Sunday. Sorry. Still getting used to it. She had dementia, which is an evil disease. As an elected official and as a person, I'm gonna be doing everything in my power to, to make it easier on other families and individuals going through this, because it's terrible. And I know there are other families in this community and throughout our country and world that are, are going through similar experiences, and my heart goes out to you. Know that you're not alone, that there are other people having this experience along with you, and to reach out and find comfort in other people. And I'm sorry, you know, it's just, it's terrible. I mean, I'm sorry for those people, because our system is broken, and when it comes to caring for people a lot, but especially for the elderly, and especially for those who, who need mental health, or are struggling with their mental health. And my mom had both of those things going on with her, so she, you know, it was just bad, and I'm sorry for that, and I'm sorry for her, and I wanna work to make it better. So, thank you. If anybody in this community knows how to help me do that, I'd appreciate that. I don't know what we can do here in our local government, but it's gonna become part of, of what I do, is, is trying to make that better. And thank you to my fellow councilmembers. They've, everybody up on this diocese has called me or texted me individually to check on me this week, and that really means a lot. I got flowers delivered to my house today from this group. So, these are really, really good people. We don't agree on everything, but you're just lucky in this community to have this group of people and this staff leading your community. It's not like this everywhere. You know, there are a lot of city councils that are dysfunctional, have people that don't like each other, and it's not like that here, and I'm so thankful for that. And, you know, it's because y'all are good people, and this is a great community that elected these good people. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the support you've given me, and please keep my family in your prayers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
I don't know if I'm gonna go behind that. You know, we stand beside you, whatever we can do. You're right, it is important that we take care of one another. We gotta take care of one another. We miss you, Portia. And I have received several complaints in reference to Allen Road. I know that there have been several accidents over there. I'm not sure what we can do in reference to that. I know there's been some complaints in reference to lighting, if we can somehow improve that and see what we can do to help the individuals over that way. And I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I'm thankful for each of you to serve with you, to walk this walk with you. Our staff is always available, always giving, always doing their very best, and sometimes they see us and they go unnoticed. People see us and the staff goes unnoticed, but we see you, and we know the wonderful work that you do, and we are appreciative of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, Matt, definitely thoughts and prayers for your family. I think probably one of the, the coolest things is to be able to see, you know, the legacy that your mom left on, and, you know, we'll see it through the actions that she, that she did throughout her life, but also, I think you're a testament to why, you know, and how proud she should be of you, because, you know, just talking about and looking at what you were able to do out in Western North Carolina, you know, she was, she was there to pass that on to you, and, you know, her legacy continues on through you, and she did an outstanding job raising you as a child, and you're an outstanding community leader for us, too, so always keep that in mind, that, you know, you, you can continue her, you can continue her good work through all the great things that you're doing here in our city and beyond, so please keep that in mind. You know, I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have a safe Thanksgiving. A lot of people will be traveling, like some of the other councilmembers had said. Make sure that you're safe when you travel. Also, make sure you go out and support local, right? I mean, it's important that we, that we shop here locally. A lot of people are struggling right now. We've seen a lot of inflation that's impacted people's checkbooks and their pockets, and it's important that we spend here locally so people have jobs, they get paid good, good quality wages, and they're able to take care of their families. Shortly after Thanksgiving, we'll have Small Business Saturday, where we encourage people throughout our community to continue to support our local businesses, because keep in mind, a lot of those business owners, they all live here, and they all employ local people that live here, too, that are gonna continue to stimulate our economy, and we wanna make sure that our, our growth starts internally, and make sure that we help the people in our community as much as we possibly can, so. Hope everyone has a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, be safe, and we'll look forward to seeing you here back in December. Councilmember Foreman?
I'd like to add one other thing. On Thanksgiving Day, we'll be having our third annual Ms. Renee Arrington's Thanksgiving Luncheon, and partnering with Arjene Jones Williams with Something to Somebody and some other organizations to provide home-cooked meals that day. Last year, we did over five hundred plates, and this year, we'll be at York Memorial AME Zion Church again, and people can come, and they can eat a meal on-site there if they like, but my team and I will be delivering meals to homeless families, sleeping in their cars, hotels, people that are out in the elements. But also, you just made me think about that with something that you said, PJ, if you know of someone who's struggling and needs a meal that day, if you could, is it okay that we have them call? If you call the city and get your name, my team and I will deliver a meal to that family.
Good. All right. Hey, you know what? Let's not wrap this out without giving everybody an opportunity. Attorney, Mr. McGurk, come on now. Hey, last Thanksgiving, I'll let you say something. Choose your words wisely.
All right, Mayor and Councilmembers. You know, I don't know really if I could follow up, match what has already been stated, I'll just echo what the city manager has stated. Happy Thanksgiving to all the city employees, I see them every day, and you, you guys and girls work really hard, and, and also, happy Thanksgiving to the mayor and councilmembers, a great council.
Thank you.
Great attorney, great attorney, too. Madam Clark?
Keep mine quick, happy Thanksgiving to all, and, yeah, Matt, we're, we're here for you if you need anything.
Yes.
Thank you.
And to all a good night.
And to all a good night.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.